Okay, we're going to begin our Iowa City City Council work session for Tuesday, December the 3rd, 2019. The first topic on our agenda tonight is to review the Johnson County Mobile Home Task Force report. Three of our members were on that task force. I'd invite them to say whatever it is they feel like they want to say about that.
I would say if folks got anything out of it at all, the important part were the 12 recommendations that outline opportunities and limitations of local municipalities to protect and stabilize the manufacturing housing as a continued source of affordable housing in Johnson County. And it goes on to like urge the cities of Corleville, Iowa City, and North Liberty to collaborate and enact recommendations to help protect these very vulnerable persons. And we have kind of started on that already, I think, in joint entities we've talked about. I think we need to continue talking about it. I was happy to see that in our legislative priorities, it's included in there. That's another start. But we can go through whatever the folks would like, go through each of the 12 steps and talk about them. If Matt Maz or Rockne have...
I think I agree.
I don't know if you just wanted to comment and give a little background?
Oh, yes, yes.
So maybe we could give a little bit of background about why we convened the task force in the first place. For those of you who may not know, there's been really two unfolding crises that we've really observed over the past, in particular, several months, but it's been, I think, building up for several years. The first crisis, I think, that has present in a lot of the mobile home parks relates to infrastructure upgrades that are necessary. One of the things that I did not go, and I think Maz has commented on this sometimes during the actual meetings, is the issues with the need to upgrade the sewer systems and the water systems for the mobile home parks. So this is for a lot of these entities and these ownerships, which typically are not large organizations that own these mobile home parks, has created a tremendous cost that is imposed on a lot of these mobile home parks. So that's one of the things that I think is leading them to both look for opportunities to get out. But then the second sort of parallel thing that we've observed through this process is that apparently there is a private equity firm out of Utah, Haven Park Capital. I don't know how they've discovered this region, but they have. Whether it's big data or what is actually causing them to focus, but we've observed are stunning increases in the purchase price of a lot of these mobile home parks. And so what we've seen is nearly double the sale price over the assessed valuation. So there's, and when this first started occurring this spring, I think many members in the community, anytime you have something that occurs, you wonder, is this sort of a one-off thing? Should we really get our hackles up, or is this maybe something that's just going to happen once, and then we can maybe relax a little bit? But what we've observed is at least four different sales in the course of the last six months. And I hope people that are watching on TV, as well as our fellow council members, had an opportunity to review the packet. But the numbers that are really jumped out to me, we have essentially the four sales, and it's in a chart at the end of it, which identifies Gulfview Investors, LC, Clear Creek, Breckenridge, and Parkview. And if you look at the assessed valuation, for example, in the Gulfview situation, it was a 6.1 million assessment approximately and a sale price of $12.3 million. So the question is, is where is those dollars going to come from? Well, they've led to, as the report notes, a significant increase in some orders of magnitude, like 63% increase that we've observed. And so I think, led by Sarah Barron, I think our thought process was, is let's see if we can convene a task force. And I think for a task force, Sarah, we moved pretty quickly, in part due to your excellent leadership on that. And we convened a lot of different stakeholders, too. The city of North Liberty, I want to give a shout out to the mayor of city of North Liberty, he did a really great job. Johnson County, we have representation there, city of Corleville. You know, we really had a wide-ranging, as well as nonprofits, I see Charlie Eastham is out there, to sort of see what are the solutions that we can look at to identify whether we have any municipal tools that we can identify. And so I don't know, Jim, in terms of what you wanted to look at, whether we wanted to sort of highlight what some of the individual task force members wanted to identify as things to look at, or whether we just sort of wanted to go through some of the 12. I think probably it'd be hard to go through all 12 tonight.
It's a focus on what you want to focus on, draw our attention to.
Yeah, okay. So what I would, I guess, draw, at least in terms of, I think, each one of the task force, we have 12 different recommendations, and they're all equally important, but one of the things that I really wanted to highlight is that if we're identifying these sort of outside private equity firm as paying double the money for these mobile home parks, that's certainly the problem. Well, what's the solution response to that? It's very complicated, but I think, to me, it's the simplest solution. Is there a way for any of these mobile home parks to purchase, or at least try to purchase, at least, or participate in the market to acquire some of these mobile home parks? That's a super complicated issue, but one of the reasons why, at least, I think the task force wanted us to at least look at that was, it is complicated. We are seeing this as a phenomenon that's coming up over time, at least four different of these parks. So the question is, is sort of who's next? And when some of these, for some of these parks, the other hope is, is that maybe once they've actually purchased them, maybe those returns aren't there, so there may be a seller, a selling opportunity we wanted to look at. So one of the things the task force looked at was, are there any nonprofits that can facilitate leadership with some of the mobile home parks? And one of them was, I'd direct your attention to paragraph 10. Rock USA is a private nonprofit that has not done any work in the state of Iowa yet in relating to assisting mobile home park residents form a nonprofit cooperative, and it also has a financing arm. I've already had some preliminary contacts with them. And one of the surprising things from that contact, and I think it may be good news, at least for the city, is that they indicated that private securing capital to purchase these mobile home parks is usually not one of the biggest obstacles. It's usually organizing. But one of the things that we wanted to do is sort of highlight what maybe people haven't even thought about, is is there a possibility for some of these mobile home park residents to participate in this marketplace? And related to that is the task force recommendation number two, which was, are there any ways in which, if there are some financing difficulties that some of the residents may have, is there any way that we could look at assisting nonprofits, secure the capital to purchase these mobile home parks? Now, this is obviously a super complicated topic that we're not going to be able to decide tonight, but we wanted to highlight those as something that perhaps the staff could investigate, see whether it's feasible at all. And so that's something that at least I wanted to see whether there was any council support for sort of further review and study on behalf of staff, at least in terms of that. In terms of that, and in terms of the rest of the recommendations, I guess I would defer to my fellow counselors that also participated on the task force, whether there's anything that they wanted to highlight. I know normally we don't call upon members of the public, but Sarah Barron was one of the task force leaders, so hopefully council would agree to allow her to make some comment tonight, just in terms of being a task force leader, if she wants to. I hate to put her on the spot. But those are the things that I wanted to at least focus on, was the question of, are there any tools that we have in our toolkit to assist with purchasing? And also hopefully to communicate to the mobile home park owners that may have not even thought about this as an option, that they should at least look at that in terms of, and hopefully we'll get some organizing, on-the-ground work with some of the residents to organize some residence associations so they can maybe participate with Rock USA as well, in terms of being able to purchase that. But that's sort of what I took out of the task force.
Okay. What I want to add, really, like really the task force has done a very good job for those recommendations, but I want to add to what Rockne said about Haven Park, because I participate with a group of local people here, the Timisters and the Labor Center and the whole mobile home park across, you know, the Iowa State, the whole Iowa State, not Johnson County only. And I went to Dubuque, because also they put another one in Dubuque, and it's just like going on and on and on. But if you look at their mission on their website, that's what they want to do, they want to make money. And they come, like, if you went to the website, you will see clearly, they would like, their goal is to buy any mobile home park, and they can pay whatever it is, even though it's not an assessment value, can they can double the value of the property just to make up money by increasing the rent. And this is really a threat to our community, because we know that like home crisis, housing, affordable housing crisis, and mobile home become very affordable for those people. And I really like all the 10 options that we have recommendation, but like two of them, even though the recommendation does not show how we can do them, but I think they are very good recommendation, and I would say you could develop a plan to do all those recommendations. But two of them stand out to me, and I wanted to follow on them. One of the number one and number 10, it's easy, the first one and the last one. And I think my recommendation would be to refer this, to refer the Johnson County Mobile Home Task Force recommendation to the HCDC to develop a plan to do number one and two. And since I have here the housing authority person, I want to ask if Section 8 cover, you know, the, I know that Section 8 would cover rent, if somebody want to rent a mobile home, I think I know that, but I'm not sure, too. But I would like to know if they cover the lot rent, because Dubuque, my understanding, the city of Dubuque, they just bought something like that, so Section 8 can cover the rent of the lot for the people who, their income is, you know, eligible income. And I want to see that if Iowa City is doing something like this, by asking the housing authority if they are doing that currently or not. But my recommendation is really for number one and two, is very important recommendation that our city can do, and I'm glad we have the committee, you know, the Housing Development Committee, we can just refer this to them if the council agree, so they can do that.
And going through that list, the one item that kind of stood out for me, too, that I think we really need to keep our ears to the ground on, is number five, in the case of annexation, because it's already, we've already talked about over the years, the possibility of annexing the mobile home park that's off of Scott Boulevard. Those folks kind of feel left out. I hear from a lot of them, oh, I wish I could vote in the local elections, because they aren't, they live so close to the city limits, but they aren't a part of the city, as well as concerns about the infrastructure and the sewer systems, and so they would like to be part of the Iowa City area. But to do that, that area would need to be annexed. So if you read that, it's, in case of annexation, implement zoning and conditional zoning agreement standards that assure the continued presence of manufacturing housing and that assure protection of the residents. So I think that's something, if this annexation question does come up over the next two or three years, or even in the next year, we need to keep that in mind and have those kinds of CZAs, if possible, in that annexation plan.
And Jeff, do you know, answer to my question?
Are you asking Jeff a particular question?
I know, I asked the housing authority.
I'd have to ask Steve Rakus to come up.
Oh, that's Section 8?
Yes.
Oh, okay.
Steve, did you hear the question?
Yes, so, mobile homes and lot rent are what HUD calls is a special housing type, and housing authorities have the discretion to assist special housing types, or not. And there's a, there's a whole list of them. Shared housing is one, mobile homes is another, homeownership is another one. The Iowa City Housing Authority, long ago, basically chose to assist all of the special housing types. But people still have to be on the waiting list and have to be determined eligible and come to the top of the waiting list in order to get the assistance. Typically, what happens with lot rent, the amount of lot rents, I understand there's been 63% increases, but right now, I think we only have maybe out of 1,300 vouchers, only about seven to nine where people are, we're helping with lot rent. Because typically what happens is the lot rent is so low, our assistance becomes zero. And they're just, you know, it's just a matter of the formula.
Yeah, I'm just asking that because the increase, and the increase will make the formula different.
Yeah, so, so like I said, right now, we probably have seven to nine active participants who are living in a mobile home, and we're helping pay towards the lot rent. There might be a couple where it's actually being rented as like a three-bedroom unit. But, so, yeah, it's something we can do, but it all depends on when somebody applies and comes to the top of the waiting list.
Sure, thank you.
Wonder if the rest of you have any comments about the report, or what you've heard your fellow council members say?
I don't have too many specific comments, other than thank you to the task force, Sarah, for leading the effort. Seventeen members to this task force, it was, it's an impressive list of people there. You know, I really am pleased and impressed with the document and the comprehensiveness of it, covering funding, policy, practices, state advocacy laws, and then concluding. So it's really comprehensive in its scope, which I think is important. I think these issues are complex, they, a lot of parts to them that need to be addressed. And so there's a lot we can focus on here and target our, you know, our attention toward. But, yeah, I don't, there wasn't anyone in particular, they were, they were all very interesting to me. I was pleased to see there is that organization, Rockne, that you mentioned, the Rock USA, that can help. You know, I am concerned with those that have always, already been purchased.
I know.
You know, that, that's a challenging situation as well, but, you know, I think it's a really excellent effort and gives us some sense of where to go, move forward.
Yeah, I would like to echo what John has said. I want to thank the task force members. This was a very comprehensive report, and a lot of data that I think most people in the community, and I would certainly acknowledge myself, was not aware necessarily of, you know, how many housing units of this type in the county. I think it's, you know, they're scattered around and not necessarily always really visible, depending upon where you happen to be driving most of your time. So I was, I was surprised at the number of units and what that really means in terms of the amount of population. And to find ways of protecting them, and I, like John said, I like the way the recommendations were done in terms of the categories. You know, what can we potentially look at in terms of funding? What can we potentially look at in terms of policy? So I think all of these are ones that are certainly worth more discussion, either here at this council table and/or with council members, board of supervisor members in the other jurisdictions, because I think we need to continue to work on this and try to work on it in a way that, if we can, in ways, I'm interested in the Rock USA, too, if there's ways to help people purchase and/or to help nonprofits purchase, so that we aren't, it's not a continual chasing our tail kind of thing of more and more and more of these just get bought up by people that all they care about is making as much money off from as they can.
Yep.
I've been pretty impressed by the, by the report and all the items that are, that's in it, as both of you have stated. The one thing that I'm real impressed by is, you know, the advocacy work that's going to be presented to the state legislators. It really does have some, I think, some actionable, attainable items, that is, that to me seems realistic and common sense for legislation to come in. Unfortunately, I, you know, wonder why all the time we have to create laws in order for people to do good. And this is, you know, the perfect...
It's a marketing incentive.
This is the perfect example of why, you know, legislation happens, is to really protect individuals that are vulnerable. And so this is, I'm very impressed with the task force, so thanks to everybody that's been a part of it. We have some dynamite people that's on the list of sitting around the table, coming up with solutions. And I was not expecting this to be so involved, because of the shortness of time that, you know, they got together. And so this was a pretty impressive, in-depth report, and I really feel that there are some actionable things that in the months to come can be followed up on, and I anticipate that this council will definitely be at the table, just to make sure that we're doing our part.
And Jim, can I make one quick call-up comment to, to piggyback on what Susan had said? It's my hope that one of the things you do, when you guys, because this is obviously going to be after the conclusion of my term, but that, that at one of the joint entities' meetings, that you identify this as the topic. And, you know, typically, our joint entity meetings are sort of show and tell, you know, where we sort of identify our projects, and I love that, too. I love seeing the bike trails and those sorts of things. But this does strike me as something, given the fact that we had representation from the county, from, that maybe you want like a substantive joint entity meeting where you can actually sort of engage, because to the special nature of the housing, to Steve's point, that's one of the things we really discovered, like mobile homes are unique. You know, it's like personal property, but there's, you know, property that belongs to someone else, and they're renting it. I mean, so it's a very unique, and it doesn't really fit with the law. And I think I also wanted to highlight that we did have Zach Walls on the, on the committee, and he did a terrific job. And he did highlight that he does think, even within the current political environment that we have, he thinks that we're going to be able to move on some of these topics. So I think hopefully we'll get some movement, even with the current situation in Des Moines that we have.
He is on the 17, the 14, we're going to Des Moines to present from, I guess a lot of people from mobile homes park, we have a mobile home park network right now, and all of them are pushing something on Iowa State registration.
Yep.
He's the one who's leading it.
I was going to mention Senator Walls also, because we were truly blessed to have him on our committee. He's very passionate about this topic and does plan to move ahead on the Des Moines level, the state level, with some of the things that really can't be done on the local level, so.
Yes, and I guess another representative called Ashley from Dubuque, or something like that, I forget her last name, but she's also pushing for that.
So I'll make a quick comment, too. It's obviously a terrific report, I was very impressed with it, and especially the quick turnaround on it. I was shocked to see that, it's really quite admirable. But the real question we have before us now, given the way we're responding to the report, is what, what do we want done with it? Do we want to refer to HCDC, which I think you suggested, Maz, at least with regard to two topics?
Yes.
Do we want to create some kind of joint entity activity that, along the lines of you suggested, Susan? Or refer it to the staff? What do you, what would you recommend that we do?
My thought would be, is I was hoping that, you know, we, obviously, it's a very detailed report, that we would give staff, I mean, there is some urgency here, but it doesn't need to be done, you know, next week. So I was thinking, like, if, you know, staff has not an opportunity to sort of review this, and what we were also hoping at, as a committee, is that each, you know, each one of these communities is different, but it's a regional problem. So we're hoping that each one of these task force members could go back to the respective jurisdictions and sort of get their feedback from their own professional staff, and then modify what they need to modify. So my hope, at least I would support, if, you know, we could get something, some sort of response from staff in terms of 90, 120 days, something along those lines, basically just so where they can sort of respond to some of these recommendations. And to Steve's point about what we're already doing, it's also our hope that we can daylight some existing programs that we already have, that maybe people don't know about. For example, home funds, we, I didn't know this, that that can be used for repairs and stuff like that with mobile homes. So that would at least be my, that we, that we get some feedback from staff in a way that fits their schedule and their workload, as far as that goes. But that's at least what I would like to see, in terms of a response to what, what the committee had generated.
And I know that we had actually asked, of course, the counselors to kind of present, but we had made mention that if Sarah wanted to present or join in the...
If we could, because she was a task force member, Jim, would that be okay?
Is it okay that we invite her up?
It's certainly agreeable, to me. Sarah, would you like to comment? You don't have to.
Would you like to, right?
Don't want to put you on the spot.
Come on up, Sarah.
Yeah.
Please, please come up, Sarah.
Hi. I'm Sarah Barron, I'm the director of the Affordable Housing Coalition. Thanks for the opportunity to talk a little bit about the task force report with you. It was a great honor to be able to convene a group of people who are all committed to improving mobile homes as an affordable housing, quality affordable housing source in our community, from so many different municipalities in Johnson County, and so many other advocates who brought their knowledge to the table. So thanks to all of you for supporting that work, and for all the nice things you said about the outcomes of that. You know, one thing I want to just add to the conversation, each of those recommendations stands on their own with a specific function to stabilize and improve the quality of mobile homes in our community, and also set a path for moving forward in preserving that. The report is restricted to things we think that local municipalities at that government level can do. It's not an exhaustive list of all of the things that we want to marshal in support of mobile home neighborhoods and of residents. So there will be ongoing work in the community that's still taking shape to bring together nonprofits that work with residents, of course, residents themselves. How can we support things at the state level, and how can we make sure that we have a stronger network of support moving forward? Another piece of it is just the general education, as you mentioned, Susan. A lot of the issues that we're seeing in the mobile home parks are not visible to the broader community, and we wanted to increase people's knowledge base so that there's a better understanding of what we need to do moving forward. As you pointed out, Rockne, mobile homes exist in a space somewhere between owning and renting, and because of that special housing type, sometimes mobile homes have fallen through the cracks with our policies and our program support. And we hope that by convening this task force and shining light specifically on mobile homes, we can improve that going forward as well. And that happens both at the governmental level and in the non-governmental level. So other than that, I think the report more or less speaks for itself. But if you have any questions, I'd be glad to answer them.
Great, thanks. So, Rockne suggested we refer this to the staff and ask the staff to provide feedback within, I don't know, 90 days or some particular period of time.
You know, when I...
What do you all think? And Jeff, you should feel free to chime in on this, too, because we're saying, this is the kind of thing staff has to do.
I guess when I say number one and number 10, because this is working direct with the resident of the mobile home that live in our city, that, because, you know, we want to become an example for the rest of the municipality or for the rest of the city, and this is something that, you know, the, you know, the, what's called housing, that the HCDC will, I guess, can lay out exactly what the current assistance in the city are, just because a lot of people ask me about if Section 8 can pay for the lot rent. We never knew that is something happening, and I guess so, I'm bringing something new, it's happening in our city. And even as a city council, I don't know anything about it. You know, I just feel like if we ask them to work on this, because they've been, they've been working and giving recommendations about, you know, how we help residents when it comes to affordable housing and homes and renting assistance and all this. That's why I really encourage those two items to be given to the committee and see what they're going to come up with, laying out the currents that we have, and what else can our city do regarding this, the capacity that we can do.
Maz, you say, give to the committee. Which committee are you referring to?
The HCDC?
The HCDC, yes.
Housing Community Development Commission.
Was it number one and two, or number one and...
One and 10.
One and 10, okay.
Yes, one and 10.
We all misheard that.
It's make rental assistance and relocation assistance available to residents harmed by unexpected sharp rent increase. Number 10, connecting with an organization like Rock USA, which assists residents in forming cooperative to purchase and manage their manufacturing housing committee, resident own community example like that. That's what I meant, those two.
So, and I hear what you're saying, is it information that essentially you're wanting?
No, I want to see how can the city, like, addition information for available assistance, assistant available to residents harmed by unexpected sharp rent increase, if happened to the people who live in our city, city of Iowa City? What currently is there? What else can we do as a city for our residents if just something like this happened? Or for the current people who are really facing this? And another one, if they want to do, is how we can refer them to organization, just like Susan Mims earlier said, you know, like, an organization can buy the mobile home park, whatever. park or whatever. It is like some kind of recommendation, some type of current assistance that we have. People don't know about it. So our network, through our network, we can just lay out those information to the public so they can know that there is something going on in Iowa City. And also, we can just set the bar high, the standard for the other municipality like Coroville and North Liberty who was participating in this task force. Yeah.
As Rockne said, I would be interested without, and again, I'd be interested in what Jeff has to say, in in terms of like, some kind of feedback or response, in terms of of where staff may think that we could start with this and where the biggest time commitment would be, you know, without staff putting in tons and tons of hours, but just kind of some feedback, like you've indicated, Rockne, where you think maybe we could get our our biggest bang for our buck for the time and effort that staff puts in and whoever puts in, to kind of focus us, because there's, I think, 12 very good recommendations, as you said, Rockne, very complex, some a little easier than others, but still going to take a lot of time. So yeah, I'd be interested in hearing what staff has to say. You know, with the funding issues, the first one, obviously, that's, I mean, that's going to be our our affordable housing money, and and I think that's going to take some thought process, whether, I think coming from staff might be a good start on that one as well, just because while we want to make, if if we're making an effort to do a new program, my only concern is that we don't make the mistake of focusing it so narrowly on residents of mobile home parks that we then leave out other people who might have just as great a need but don't happen to live in a mobile home. Hear what I'm saying?
Yeah.
So, so I would be interested in having this, kind of the starting place be the staff to do a review and suggestions.
So what I what I really hear, at least what I hear you hear you saying is you want information about what funding options are out there, and even on number 10, which I
Recommendation?
Yes. I think staff honestly may be the best start, because I've seen, you know, a lot of charts about what is available. And I think the commission, I'm not exactly sure if they will have all of the expertise on various different things throughout the the city contacts and even no one was else available within the community.
But the East Commission have a staff member, I guess Tracy, you have staff on that that commission, right?
Staff is on there.
And there, and the people will, you know, that's what the commission, you know, sometime bring recommendation, is not taken from staff time and everything. After that, the staff will can say, and especially there is somebody from the staff there, if this out of their capacity, they will say, by the way, we cannot do this, or this is not this. That's why the staff is there, and it's not taken from the staff a lot of time.
Are you
Let's let's give Jeff an opportunity to weigh in on this.
I appreciate that. We haven't had a chance to sit down as a staff and go through this, but I imagine several of us have gone through it and have our own thoughts. Regarding items one and 10, keep in mind that you already have an emergency fund within your affordable housing fund set up for, I would say, situations just like this. It's 5% of your set aside, so with a million dollars annually into the fund, which has been your your trend the last few years, you have $50,000. That was created with the Rose Oaks situation in mind, which I would think would be very similar to this. You have an abrupt event that causes a lot of distress in a housing community. So I do feel right now that we would have the ability to make some headway on number one already. We have a program in place. We don't have well-defined parameters for that program, but council could certainly look at sharp rent increases like we have heard reported or that are being experienced in Gulfview and other other sites and say, this this qualifies for use of the emergency fund. And just like we did with Rose Oaks and with the property up on Prairie Des Chene, you all responded and used those funds to help out. So I don't know that there needs to be a whole lot of thought into that, probably just thinking, thinking through with the size of our parks, if 50,000 would be enough to to adequately respond, given some of these timelines that are suggested by the task force, rental assistance of 180 days, for example. So I'm a little less concerned with one. I don't think that's that's an item for us, at least, that needs a whole lot of study, because I think you've already anticipated that through through past planning. Number 10, what I would say with number 10, I think number 10 fits that joint entities meeting really well, because I don't think you're going to want Iowa City exploring nonprofit cooperatives and Coroville exploring it and North Liberty exploring it and then trying to compare notes at the end. I think that makes sense if you could get an intergovernmental or maybe a subcommittee of this task force to continue on and to try to make contact with Rock USA or others and work together so that you're all working from the same base of information. I think that would be extremely helpful. So that, to me, has a little bit more regional appeal. Most of the other strategies, I think, are going to have to be deployed on a case-by-case basis. Obviously, annexation is only going to work in a few cases, but we have Sunrise, we have Modern Manor that are ripe for annexation. We should be preparing for that. And I think, as you know, staff has been in some level of talks of annexation with those two parks off and on for the last couple of years at least. So in terms of in terms of next steps, I think you, I think you look through these. We can, we can share our thoughts, and if you prefer, we share those thoughts with HCDC and then come back to you. That's fine. We have no problem with that. And then I think you pick off a couple of these and and to Councilman Cole's suggestion, maybe you zero in on the joint entities meeting as a way to to further those efforts.
I had talked about joint entities meeting presentation previously also. I would like to ask Sarah, I don't know if she can come up to the mic again, just a quick question, as far as what is your sense for the other municipalities, North Liberty, Coroville, have they presented to their councils yet? Have you gotten any feedback from them, where they are with that, so we could sort of have a timeline when we could plan for a joint entities meeting on it?
To my knowledge, this is the first formal discussion that has taken place among a full body, but we are anticipating, we are anticipating these discussions in each of the the four main municipalities.
Okay, so maybe if you could keep in touch with all of us, and then we could, we could plan around that as soon as they've had the opportunity, we could bring it to a joint entities conversation, so.
Yeah, absolutely.
Okay, thank you. The other thing I just wanted to note was that we didn't reinvent the wheel with a lot of these recommendations. There was a lot of research. You said it's a very full document, and it is, and a lot of people were doing a lot of research into other communities, other states, because this is happening all across the country. And as far as what kinds of measures they are putting in place to to help these people and to prevent these companies coming in and buying these up and then raising the lot rent. So we sort of restructured some of it and made it appropriate for for our area, but we really didn't reinvent everything. It's it's out there and and working in other communities.
I just want to ask Jeff, you says there is 50% on the affordable housing, 5% actually, which is $50,000.
Yes.
Yeah, that was very good for Roxex and, you know, for for the crisis that happened. Anyway, I just want to ask, is there is another fund beside that? Because 50,000, just see right now, having parked like, say, they bought two or three mobile home park at once. For example, if we have two mobile hub bar have crisis at the same time, the 50,000 is not enough for 180 days that the report recommended. That's why when I say refer it to the committee, so they can find like a way to do this and give the recommendation to us. Because the 50,000 that we have aside is not going to be enough sometime. Say, for example, if we used for when, you know, before the budget year went through and we we needed two or twice, and we already used that 50,000. We need like really a solid, like, really ways of resources for this kind of thing that we can just do it all the time if something, just in case if something just happened. Hopefully, no one need it. But that's why I'm saying refer it to the committee. And the staff there also, or the way that you just suggested, give your communication, give it to the committee, let the committee review it and bring it back to us, and we can see, you know, if there is difference between the committee recommendation and the staff recommendation.
The the only comment I guess I would have there is, I mean, what that really comes back to is how we how we prioritize our budget. And so to me, that's, that's the duty of the council to do that budget prioritization. And so, I mean, I would agree with you, Maz, if there's some major issue, that 50,000 in emergency very well could not be enough. And so I think that is where we have to have those conversations as a council, as to, you know, how do we prioritize what our budget looks like? My concern when you get one commission looking at one narrow focus, and and I totally understand this, they're not, they're not looking at the whole budget, they're looking at prioritizing that one particular issue. And so, of course, they want as much money as it would take to solve that problem, which I totally understand. That's, that's what they're looking at and what their priority is. But our mission has to be to look at the entire budget for all the city needs. And so I think that's something that that we need to, you know, kind of keep in front of us as we start doing those budget talks and reviewing the budget, which we'll have here at the end of the month, and keeping this in mind as we start looking at those allocations in January.
I do agree with you as far as like the council looking globally, but I think just like this is a task force looking specifically at, you know, mobile home, mobile homes and the crisis that's being experienced. After, you know, Maz speaking, you know, one and HCDC, and I was trying to get at, you know, what was her rationale for having HCDC? And I really believe that it's a collaboration between what the staff is recommending and what HCDC, these various people, might come to say, yeah, that's great, but have you thought about this? And it's more of a focused, they're really focused on the mobile homes. Ultimately, the hope would be what would be the the worst extreme situation and, you know, what would be a solution there? Now, council, of course, I can probably tell you, may not be able to figure out what their worst situation is financially, but I think it's good to know what that worst situation is so that we at least have that knowledge. So I personally am in agreement with staff taking it, figuring out some pathways forward for HCDC receiving it, giving some comments, and looking at it with that worst-case scenario as well as with what can we do now? So that's kind of how I see it. I do believe that we should always begin with the end in mind. This is a way to do that, is by involving HCDC, from what I understand Maz wants to do. So I can, you know, I don't think it'll hurt anything doing it this way.
It seems to me that's a reasonable pathway, to ask staff to review the document, prepare basically a report, share it with HCDC, have HCDC review that report, provide us with recommendations, then have it come back to the council with basically both the staff's initial response and HCDC's recommendations. And then in the end, of course, Susan's right about, we have to exercise judgment about what to do in response. So that'll be up to the council at that point. I think the key question then would be, what kind of timeframe do we have in mind? I mean, if y'all are in agreement with that pathway.
Not just Susan, so.
I would defer to Jeff's. Yeah. What does Jeff think is reasonable?
I sort of like the idea of, you know, a quick response in terms of what, I mean, just what Jeff related on some of the items that we have in the report, you know, next steps in terms of the 12 steps, timeframes associated with them. So it's sort of a flex, you know, an immediate response that has a flexible timeframe in the response in terms of each item may be resolved very quickly, others may take some time.
Does this make sense, Jeff?
Yeah, I just, I mean, to clarify, we're not, we're not, we're not bringing you or we're not bringing HCDC recommendations. The recommendations are out there. We're going to provide some commentary on them and maybe some, as as Rockne said, maybe daylighting some existing programs that you may not know about or you may not recall. So I don't, I don't think it's a lot of work for us, but certainly we'd appreciate a couple months' time if we get, try to get to HCDC and at their January or February meeting, if that's okay. And I think you should, you should feel good knowing that should a crisis emerge in the next couple of weeks, you have funds set aside, you also have reserve funds, you have emergency funds available if the crisis gets elevated beyond $50,000. So you should take some comfort that we can respond to an emergency, as you described, in which maybe two parks are bought and and folks are in a in a stressed situation. So if I'm okay with you, I would suggest, you know, shooting for that January, February HCDC meeting, and we'll provide some commentary. But at least my thought on this is, it's not going to be a whole lot of narrative from staff. It's just going to be a reaction to those 12.
Yep, that's what I was thinking.
Sure, but I just want to ask you, if we did that, we still going to have time to add, to change something in the budget regarding if we want to allocate some money aside or anything, if it come by recommendation? That's not going to be a problem?
No, I think if you're, if you're looking at emergency funds, you know, the 50,000, you can always change your affordable housing percentage allocation. If you wanted to make that 10% of those affordable housing dollars, you could do that at any time. Or, you know, through the budget process, if you wanted to go beyond the $1 million and say, I want to budget 1.5 and and beef up the emergency reserve that way, you can certainly do that. But there's not a whole lot of, other than the emergency funding, the other items in here don't necessarily require immediate dollars, whether you're talking urban renewal areas or potentially infrastructure with with annexation agreements. Those are, those are things that you don't necessarily need dollars in the budget right away for. So I feel, I feel pretty good that budgetarily, I think we sit in a fine spot right now. I don't
But Rockne, Rockne mentioned another budget, another fund, I mean.
Well, I don't know if I mentioned the other fund. I think in terms of the Rock USA piece of it, one of the things, I just want to elaborate a little bit more on that, is that one hope that I have is that it may be that there'll be no need for any municipal funding at all. Okay? So what I am hopefully going to continue to do is to still, I've had some preliminary contacts with them. They have some expertise in terms of this municipal ownership process. And again, one of my first conversations I had, they actually said that funding usually is not the key difficulty, which was surprising, because they have a social equity investment arm, at least for this entity. There aren't a ton of them out there. So my hope is we continue exploring that, and then if it turns out that there's no need for any municipal funding through a nonprofit or some assisting or backing alone, then we're good. If it turns out that they go through this process, come in, they try to secure lending, there may be some things down along the line where maybe some of the joint entities may wish to do some assistance. So that's what I would see, that particular one. But even that one potentially could have a big sticker to it, but at least right now it's zero. We're just only evaluating that. So, and it could be that a purely market-based solution will be available.
Sure.
Sounds like we have a pathway. Are you all comfortable with January or February HCDC process or timing?
Sure. Yes.
Okay, great. And with regard to the joint entities meeting, I think I heard the suggestion that item 10 would be a good topic for the joint entities meeting to discuss, so we should sort of put that on our, on our list of joint entities topics to discuss by your own.
Sure.
Okay, and does anything else need to be discussed about this topic?
The only thing with just, I'm going to have continuing outreach, just wanted to give counsel with Rock USA to gather more information, but just just only information gathering at this point, so.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you. I think that means we can turn to our next topic, South District Form-Based Code update. Tracy Hichu and Ann Russett, both are going to be up here.
Hi, Tracy Hichu with Neighborhood and Development Services. Wanted to give you a brief background before Ann gets back up here and talks about where we are now with the form-based code for the South District. As you remember, back in 2015, the council passed the South District Plan. So we worked with neighbors, stakeholders, on a plan for the the South District. And that plan had a lot of guiding principles, including compatible infill development, compact development, diversity of housing, affordable housing. The diversity of housing was to accommodate people at whatever stage of life they're in, whether they're students, young families, empty nesters, retirees, that you had a mix of housing in every neighborhood, so you didn't have pockets of maybe multifamily, large-scale multifamily. The plan also had a guiding principle of neighborhood commercial. They wanted focal points and gathering places in their neighborhood. Interconnected streets was a major issue for the South District and pedestrian bike connections. So in 2017, we hired Opticos to do a Phase 1 study, and this was a So, in 2017, we hired Opticos to do a Phase 1 study, and this was a project direction report that, and a form-based analysis for the North Side and South District. And you can see that many of the things that we looked at at that study fit well into what the South District guiding principles included. So, based on the Phase 1 study and the recommendations that the report had, we entered agreement with Opticos for Phase 2. And Phase 2 was part of developing a form-based regulation for our South District. So, Ann Russell, our senior planner, is going to talk about that Form-Based Code and where we sit on that process right now.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Thanks, Tracy. As Tracy mentioned, I'm going to really focus on where we're at with the development of the Form-Based Code for the South District. And first, I wanted to talk about some of the project goals that we have for, for this new Form-Based Code. And as Tracy talked about the South District Plan and Phase 1, and we really want to, as part of this process, implement the direction and the policies in the South District Plan. We want neighborhoods that are safe for pedestrians. We want to preserve environmental resources. We want a highly interconnected network of streets and paths. We want to allow a variety of housing types through this new code. We also want a predictable land development process, not just for developers, but also for community members. And we want the ability to apply these regulations to other greenfield sites in the city. And the map that you see on the right is the project area for, for the proposed Form-Based This is an area that was developed under a Form-Based Code. Prior to its development, it was a greenfield. This is Newtown, St. Charles in Missouri, which is outside of St. Louis. And this is just kind of an example of, of what the South District could look like with the Form-Based Code. You can see here from the aerial that you do have a highly interconnected network of streets and paths, centers and plazas, and, and green space and civic space. This is some street views from Newtown, St. Charles. And these pictures show some of the features that we hope to accomplish through creating a Form-Based Code and having development develop under that Form-Based Code. So, we see green spaces and civic spaces that are not only amenities for the community, but also service stormwater management. You see a variety of housing types. I want to point out the, the housing, the blue house on the right in the middle, that's actually, it's called a mansion-style home. It's a house-scale multifamily, so there's probably seven to nine units in there, but based on the scale, it fits in with a traditional, a single-family neighborhood. The initial draft code is available right now. It's on our project website. And I'd like to provide just a high-level overview of what is included in that draft right now. We are in the middle. Staff and the community is both, both reviewing this code and providing feedback and some comments to Opticos. The, the Form-Based Code is based on the transect, which I think at the last meeting, Tony from Opticos discussed the transect with, with the city council. And the transect is a way to categorize different environments, the natural environment all the way to the built environment. And there are six different types of transects. On the left, you have conservation or natural areas, open space areas, all the way up to the right, which is the T6 transect, which is the urban core. Iowa City actually has examples of all of these, depending on where you're at in the city. However, the South District has three. We have, in the South District, the T1 natural transect, T3, which is more suburban development, and then T4, which is general urban. So, the draft code at this point identifies six different zoning districts that could be applied within the South District planning area, including the T1 natural, two T3 zones, and then three T4. And I'm going to go through each of these relatively quickly. The first, again, is T1 natural zone. No development would be allowed in this zone. This is for nature and open space. The next is the T3 neighborhood edge zoning district. This zoning district would allow two stories maximum with an occupied attic. This does seem a little bit less intense than some of the other zoning districts. You can see that the homes are set back further from the street. There's more space, front yard space. There is a mix of housing types that would be allowed, but fewer than some of the other districts. So, a single-family detached home, a duplex, and a cottage court would be allowed in the zoning district. The next district is the T3 neighborhood general zone. Again, they allow, in this zone, it would allow two stories with an occupied attic. You can see these homes in the right are a little bit closer to the street. And this zone would allow a few additional housing types, a multiplex small and a townhouse small. Again, these are all house-scale multifamily that would fit within an existing single-family And moving on to the T4 zones, the first is the T4 neighborhood small zone. This would also have a two-story max with an occupied attic, and it will allow, it would allow a few different housing types, the cottage court, the multiplex small, and the courtyard apartment. Again, these, these are all predominantly house-scale multifamily. Moving on to the T4 neighborhood medium zone, this is a little bit higher intensity. The height is increased to three stories in this zone with an occupied attic. And this zone would allow multiplex large and courtyard buildings. The last zoning district is the T4 Main Street Zone. We see this zone be, being applied not, not throughout the, the South District planning area, but in key nodes. And this, unlike the other zoning district, would allow block-scale buildings as opposed to the house-scale buildings. The Form-Based Code draft also regulates uses, and the draft code outlines the uses that are allowed in each of these proposed zoning districts. The draft also includes thoroughfare standards. This is a little bit different than typical zoning ordinances, which only regulate the private realm. This is looking at standards that would apply to streets and right-ofways, sidewalks and bicycle facilities. The, the draft code identifies eight different thoroughfare types, and we're in the process of reviewing these with our public work staff. The draft code also includes civic space standards and outlines seven different types of civic space. The code also includes frontage standards, which will outline frontage options on how the building, the private, private realm of the building interacts and is connected to the public realm, the sidewalk and, and the street. And the, the code identifies 11 different types of frontage standards. And then lastly, the code includes building type standards. And you can think about these as the different housing types that would be allowed in the different zoning districts, although they would allow some non-residential uses as well. And there are 10 different building types that would be allowed throughout these, throughout the South District in various zones. The part of the project is also developing a regulating plan, and this is currently being developed right now. The regulating plan could be described as a zoning map with some additional detail. So, it will identify different zoning districts throughout the planning area. It will also identify areas for civic and open spaces, neighborhood centers, and it will also include a network of streets and blocks. And right now, staff is exploring, developing a regulating option, regulating plan option that would not only identify the street network, but also rezone the land as part of that process, too. And this goes back to one of the goals of having a predictable land development process. And we want to get to the point where everyone can get behind the standards in the code, and as part of this process, we can rezone the land to help streamline the development process after the, the code is adopted. I wanted to highlight some of the stakeholder outreach that we've conducted to date and plans for future outreach. The project kicked off earlier this year, and in April, Opticos made their first trip to Iowa City. And we had stakeholder interviews and meetings with a variety of individuals and groups, from architects and developers to HOA representatives, realtors, housing advocates. And really sat down and kind of had more of a focus group sessions where we discussed issues and identified concerns. In July, Opticos came back and presented the results of the residential market analysis. And then most recently, last month, we held meetings with the development community and landowners in the area, as well as community residents, to go over the draft code and answer any questions. And we have requested that the community provide feedback on the draft that's online now by mid-December. And staff will forward those comments along to Opticos for, for review. In January, we will be releasing the draft regulating plan options. That will be, those options will be made available on our website, and we'll also have meetings with stakeholders to discuss the regulating plan options and get comments on those drafts. We will be having Opticos come back for additional trips to do more outreach as well. And then in early 2020, we will be releasing a revised draft of both the code and the regulating plan. And in terms of the timeline and next steps, I mentioned the release of the regulating plan in January. All of the comments that we receive from the community and also staff, because we are actually reviewing this code right now as well, all of those will be forwarded to Opticos. A revised draft will be made available to, to the public for additional comment, and then an adoption draft will be developed. And we hope to bring that adoption draft to the Planning and Zoning Commission and then to city council in spring of 2020. And that's all I have. I can answer any questions. Thank you.
You said the meeting that you had, the public meeting that you had, during the meetings, they did not give us any feedback, or you said the feedback will come later?
There were some questions and comments at the meetings, but we encourage people to review the code and to provide more feedback if they had any questions or comments.
Okay, sure.
How many, how many acres of land are we talking about with this?
Around 1,700 acres.
I'm really pleased to see the progress that staff and Opticos has made on this. I think one of the things we've talked about for quite a while is trying to get away from just, you know, acres and acres and acres of single-family homes and have variety of housing types, et cetera. And so, this is just a really different approach than we've ever used in Iowa City. And so, really excited to, to see the progress and see more details as they come out. So, thank you.
I'm curious, too. I think one thing that came up last summer, I know some of the development community have concerns about the market for this. Have you guys, in terms of the other areas that have approached it, I think there's been very robust development in those areas, like in other communities. Are you guys tracking how well it's played out in other communities in terms of the market, the, the demand for this type of development? Because I think there is a huge demand for it, but because it's, to Susan's point, we're not as familiar why, I think there's some reluctance on the part of the development community that hopefully we can persuade them otherwise.
Right. Yeah, there are definitely examples throughout the nation of successful examples of Form-Based Codes being implemented and applied to greenfield sites. And I think that's one of the reasons we also wanted to do the residential market analysis. And some of the questions that we wanted answers to is, is there a market for missing middle housing in this area? And the answer, the short answer is yes, there is. The market study also identifies some price points for rent and for sale for different types of missing middle housing types. And it also talks about absorption rates. So, that's something that we felt was very important to help move this forward.
And correct me if I'm wrong, typically, there's going to be more socioeconomic diversity. I mean, I think to Susan's point, where some of the traditional housing developments were single-family, 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 and they tended to be a standardized price point, which meant that although the income wasn't exactly the same, it tended to be tracked by the neighborhood. But these sorts of neighborhoods are going to have more socioeconomic diversity than you would otherwise see in a traditional, single-family neighborhood.
I don't know if I can answer that. That's, I think, what we hope for.
There will be more housing types.
Definitely be more housing choices and options.
So, one thing, one thing I'll say about this, as someone in the community told me, predictability is what people want from government. And this Form-Based Code gives that, is predictability with the T1, the T2, the T3, the T4, and the T4 Main Street. It is something that I think from staff and from the developer, they're going to know exactly what to expect or what, what can take place. And so, I love this idea of, you know, this area just being one that will kind of meet some climate action goals in there as well, because it'd be a, a more dense population. I think it's, I think it's great. I'm applauding the staff for all of the work that you all have been doing. Looking forward to this community. I love where I live, but this looks great.
So, Ann, correct me if I'm wrong, but I understand that the predictability really depends greatly on whether the zoning is incorporated in the regulating plan so that the area is rezoned as part of the initial action instead of rezoning one by one.
That's correct.
Yeah, because we've learned from our other large Form-Based Code south of Burlington Street that there can be complications associated with individual rezonings.
Yep.
So, I'm very hopeful we can get rid of that as a problem.
I'm just going to fall upon Jim real quickly. Sorry. I think a big part of that is this is greenfield. And we didn't want to rezone some of those because we wanted something. So, that makes it much easier here.
So, Ann, did you say the total acreage is 27 acres, 2700 acres?
Seventeen.
Seventeen hundred. Wanted to be clear about that.
I just want to say this is, oh, you finished?
Yeah. And when did you say Opticos will be coming back?
We haven't decided that yet. We're still, it's going to be early next year at some point, but we don't have an exact date.
Okay.
I just want to say this is really, I like this plan and for the form-based, for South District especially. Even though to Rockney's point, this is, to me, and you cannot even answer that question, this is not quite going to be low income, but at least like variety of range of income, which is needed at the South Districts. Especially, we have a lot of low income there, and this is, will be very good for the school. Hopefully, this will come to, during the joint entity meeting, because this is, might need another school to be like maybe there. So, and the people will be mixed income, with low income and middle class and maybe high-income people going to the same school, which will be amazing. I think this is really nice for the South District.
Well, I definitely agree that when, when this is advanced far enough, it should be presented to, at the joint entities meeting and as well individually with school district people so that they are fully aware, the school board especially is fully aware of what's emerging in this area. I know they're generally aware of what we're doing, but this is a big step forward.
Yes.
Okay.
Very nice. Good job.
Yeah, this, it's very exciting to see the, this thing taking shape. And it certainly will be the most complete neighborhood in Iowa City in terms of, especially new development with commercial center, open spaces, as well as natural areas. Walkability is kind of the foundation of the plan. Certainly incorporates the other forms of mobility, but it's sort of founded on the idea that it will be comfortable to walk through the neighborhood. And so, you're not buying into a development, you're buying into a neighborhood and a community. I mean, that, I think, is the, the key transformative aspect of this, is that it will be a community. It's not simply a development. And, you know, the, there's a market for community, I would say, as well as a missing middle.
I was just going to say that I, I really like this plan also, and I think we've talked, especially John, over and over for the last three, four years about the missing middle and the need for the missing middle. And I like the connectivity of it. I think somebody mentioned reluctance of developers, and I think we've, we've seen that, that the housing types that are going up, the communities around the area are 300, 400,000-dollar homes. Those are not affordable to a lot of people. So, I really love that mix of housing types and the affordability and the concept of the two to three stories, the mix of that, that, I like that. And I think there's a market for it.
Maybe I could just, quick comment, too. I think of John as my, he's my favorite urban planning nerd. He loves this stuff. And I'm an urban planning dilettante, is that I, I know just enough to get in trouble. But to, for the community, those of you who are watching, this is a huge deal. The Form-Based Code, I mean, this is cutting-edge, and I think staff is leading us in terms of a cutting-edge development. But it's also sort of back to the future in the sense of, it's basically based upon traditional principles. So, if people are sort of wondering, what is this all about? Go to our historic neighborhoods where we sort of used to know how to build these sorts of neighborhoods organically with neighborhood commercial that sort of fit with all these different types of housing types, with a rooming house, with a multifamily, with duplex, quadplex. There was a time where we sort of forgot how to do that. And so, this sort of movement really has sort of learned from these traditional principles and brought them forward, and then we're sort of realizing how And then we're sort of realizing how awesome these communities were in the first instance. So, I'm really excited about it. And I think in terms of having this neighborhood commercial, we're getting a little bit of neighborhood commercials that are recovering in our inner core neighborhoods now, too. And it's going to be exciting to see what happens in our newer neighborhoods, where you get the coffee shops, the bakery, those sorts of things that are walkable in a suburban context. So, great work. And it's fun to sort of see this come to fruition. You know, a lot of times with council, we sort of want stuff to happen right now. This process started in 2017, and maybe even a little bit earlier. And we're now really starting to gather the fruits of all the hard work that you have put in, and as well as Opticos. So, it's great work.
Okay. Thank you, Anne. Thank you, Tracy. Let's move to our next item, which is clarification of agenda items. And I want to mention that staff has asked us to defer action on Item 6K, 6L, and 6M. And I intend to call out, not pull out, but just call out, other items that are in the consent calendar, probably Items 6F, 6J, and 6P. 6F is the piece of national legislation having to do with carbon fee and dividend. 6P is the methane study, and I've forgotten what the other, oh, the other ones, the housing vouchers. I just want the public to know about those.
To add to that list, Jim, I would like to pull out yet again 6C, the personnel policies.
You want that for separate consideration?
For separate consideration, yes.
I agree too. But did you say 6J, too?
Just KLM.
No, no.
Just to mention it, not...
Just to mention it. I'm not, I don't intend to pull it out. I just, just during discussion, I will say something about...
Later or now?
Later.
During the formal meeting.
Okay, you don't, yeah, I want to say about that, too. And also, I would love to blow out 6C, as Pauline said. And I want to talk about 7C. I want to ask our city manager, Jeff, to comment on that, about the letter about the storm water retention system.
Why don't you just do that right now? That doesn't have to be part of the formal meeting.
I want to ask him now, yeah.
Yeah, okay.
I'm asking him now.
Okay, good.
Yeah. To comment on 7C about the letter about the storm water retention system.
So, several of the council members, over the years, have been brought into this conversation. This is a wetland/storm-water detention facility that is private in Old Town Village, which is a neighborhood south of Blackstone Restaurant on the east side of town. For years, it's been caught up in a, kind of a disagreement between the homeowners association and the developer of that site. It's a fully built-out neighborhood now, but the developer had some responsibilities to the Army Corps of Engineers for wetland requirements. And the homeowners actually own the ground and are responsible for maintaining a, basically a private storm water detention. We'll get into all the details on why there was some disagreements, but thankfully, I think there has some, been some resolution. The developer has satisfied his requirements with the U.S. Army Corps of Engineers. And now, I think, at least in my view, it is clear that the homeowners association now has the full maintenance responsibilities of that detention basin. And because it has been neglected for over a decade, there's some serious maintenance responsibilities that need to occur there. And I forget exactly what Mr. Hott's letter claims, but I think, I've talked with him a number of times over the years, as have many of you. I think that he feels that the city should have a role in the maintenance and upkeep of that detention basin, and we just frankly, we just don't agree with that.
I, yes, if you can respond to him and convince him why you are not agreeing, or...
Something like that.
I can respond, but I cannot convince him.
No, he has to respond, though. Somebody asks about something, I think this, we need to respond.
There have been extensive discussions involving lots of people.
But even now, he's sending a letter. Tell him, no, we cannot do that.
It goes over the same territory every time.
I'm happy to respond to the letter.
No, but please respond. That's what I'm asking. Please respond.
I could tell you, our staff probably has multiple conversations with Mr. Hott every month, sometimes every week.
I wasn't know that, but respond.
And Jim and I have been in multiple meetings over the last, I don't know, year and a half, or whatever. It's, yeah.
For me, this is the first time I learned about this. That's why I thought, like, something huge. Anyway, also, I want to talk about the letter from Paul, 7L. It is late handout distribution.
Oh, yeah.
And I want to ask the city manager about the map. If you can explain what exactly the map show us? And if it's really show what us, what it show? If you can have explanation for that.
Yeah, can you hold on for a second, Maz? Has everybody had a chance to see what Maz is referring to? Who's in there?
Yeah, the Paul Watau email.
Right, right.
Yeah, he emailed us, and he have handout. He emailed yesterday.
It doesn't look right on the face of it, so we just need to have a sense of...
This is the sidewalk snow clearing item. At the end of last season, last snow season, if you will, we had a city employee express some concerns, a transit driver, so someone that's frequently going through neighborhoods, that there were a number of children in that particular neighborhood that were forced to walk on the street. So, it was an observation of a transit driver, that the sidewalks were not being cleared on a regular basis in that neighborhood, and it was forcing some children into the streets, perhaps in some unsafe situations. So, we made note of that, and then on the first snowfall, first snowfall this year, we went out to check on that. As you know, the vast majority of our responses during the snow events are on a complaint basis. However, in this case, we felt some responsibility to go out and take a look at that. So, we did issue notice of violations to this general area for those that weren't compliant with clearing the snow. It was 24 hours after the snowfall ended. We met all the standards that we need to meet. And keep in mind, a notice of violation is not, is not necessarily a ticket. It's putting them on notice that there's a violation that they need to remedy. So, that's what, that was done in this area. In your information packet this week on Thursday, you're going to get a kind of comprehensive overview of our snow removal procedures, both on-street and on-sidewalks, so you can become more familiar with how we handle those complaints. I think, if you recall, last year, we had well over 1,000 complaints come into the city on sidewalks that weren't cleared with snow. We hear it loud from both sides, and we get frankly beat up from both sides. People that say we're not aggressive enough with clearing snow, and then people say that we're way too aggressive and punitive when it comes to it. It's a difficult situation. We try to make sure that we follow the procedures for that reason, so that we can be clear and consistent. However, I think the change, the difference in this piece was we were proactive in this piece, based on the complaint we had from our transit driver last year, as opposed to waiting for a complaint in this area. So, we were hoping to get out early and make notice of that. I think you also know, we do put out a lot of communication on the sidewalk, snow clearing responsibilities. It's hard for us to get into every household, too. They know that. We do our best through social media, through Nextdoor and other measures, but sometimes you have to go out and issue those notice of violations, so that people know those responsibilities without incurring the costs that come with violations.
My only comment on that is, first of all, I think staff was acting in the best of faith with this, I think in terms of their safety obligations. The only thing I would go back to is, one of my very first seminars I went to after I was elected four years ago, where they talked about, one of the problems with if it's totally complaint-based, it can have disproportionate impact on certain neighborhoods. If it's only complaint-based, so I think it's sort of a balance. I think obviously, health and safety is absolutely critical. We need to make sure we do that. But that was sort of one of the first things that I learned, and I have channeled Kingsley Batshuayi, I give him a shout-out on that, are there ways in which, when we're acting in the best of faith, if it's based upon that complaint, we could have a disproportionate impact on certain neighborhoods? So, I think he's highlighting not necessarily the fact that the notice was given, but that was in the certain neighborhood, and the optics, if not the substance, are extremely concerning. So, my thought process going forward would be, obviously, staff has a very tough job, and I'm, health and safety is absolutely critical. Keep doing a great work. But if we could just make sure that we're continuing to make sure that that next map looks like... And I, by the way, I should confess, I've gotten those notices while I've served on council, so we're not exempt from that. And I live on, I live on Court Street, so I mostly try to do a good job. And I didn't love that either, but, you know, it's a health and safety issue, so... And I know they do go throughout the neighborhoods, but the optics did not look very good there.
Yeah, and just to be clear, there were, there were notices issued in other parts of the community. And on the equity issue, I completely understand that. But the equity issue works both ways, right? If we're not enforcing in certain neighborhoods, and those residents in those neighborhoods don't have access to clear sidewalks, there's some equity issues there, too.
Yep.
So, I think it was a good...
It's a tough issue.
I mean, it's a, it's a, it's a good intro to the snow season for us, and a reminder how sensitive this issue is. And again, we'll try to be clear and consistent. We don't want to be punitive. Our goal is just that we get compliance. And sometimes that initial notice of violation is a, is a scary thing to receive, particularly if you're not familiar with our system. But, but again, our hope going forward is that those people and other people that get those notice of violations then just become a little bit more aware of those responsibilities. I understand the optics are bad on this, and, you know, we'll continue to do our best as staff on snow removal. I expect after you get that memo and this week's IP, you're probably going to want to talk about this again, because for those of you that remain on council through the, through the season, if our winter is anything like last year, you will be hearing about it, too, probably.
Yes.
So, there will be more equitably distributed proactive inspection? Is that...
We, we try. Now, we get to a situation like we had last year, we didn't have a moment to hardly catch our breath. The inspectors didn't. It was, it was complaint basis only, and we were struggling to keep up with just the complaints. We, you know, our housing inspectors are the one that go out there and do this, and it's a, it's a exhaustive process. We have to wait the 24 hours after the snowfall. We have to document the conditions. We have to come back and, and document the conditions after a period of time. So, it's not just a complaint that takes 10 minutes to go respond to. Each complaint takes a considerable amount of time to analyze and to enforce, and ultimately, if you have to hire, you know, we hire a contractor to clear, and so it can, it can be a pretty time-consuming process.
Well, I can say, I have slipped on thick ice, thickly iced sidewalks before, fallen down and hit my head. I had to go to the emergency ward at Mercy once. And, I know, y'all are thinking the consequences are obvious that I hit my head, but nonetheless, nonetheless, it's a serious problem. We've got to keep the sidewalks clear in the winter. And it's, it is a challenge, as Jeff notes, quite rightly.
I really agree with you, but still, we have, we need equal distribution, so we are not going to have map like this. Thank you for the hard work that our city people does. This is, I know that you work on, especially during wintertime. This is, like, really shout-out to all the employees who care about us during wintertime.
In this week's memo on this topic, there is a map in there that shows where the complaints were last year. And I think that, you know, looking at it an entire season, will give you a better representation of where our efforts are throughout the year.
Okay.
And for 6G, I just want to really shout-out and thank you, the House, the Housing Authority, for overseeing this additional rental assistance voucher. Thank you, because this is really huge to the city. That's what I want to say on this. And I don't think I have another one. That's it.
Any other agenda items? I'm going to mention Item 11, which is repeal of the rental permit moratorium. I want to give you a heads-up that I'm going to invite a motion to defer action on this particular topic until the December 17 meeting. And I can explain why when we get to the meeting, but I just want to give you a heads-up that I will be doing that.
Sure.
Any other agenda items? Can we turn to the information packet? October 21? I'm sorry, November 21.
It says October, but...
Yeah.
The typo. I don't have any.
Okay, let's move to November 28. My birthday, yay! Thank you.
Glad to know that.
Oh, was it? Oh, darn it. Right, it was the 27th.
Close. Yeah, well, I don't want to bust your butt.
My grandmother's birthday.
It was early.
I'll just note, IP Number 5, which is a letter from MediaCom concerning rate adjustments. I mean, just observe it, that it's not a happy situation.
Along with IP 3 on the previous one, the removal of channels.
The channels, exactly.
So, removing channels on one, raising the prices on the next one.
And they provide an explanation as to why they're doing it. It strikes me as a believable explanation, but there you go. Okay, October, November 27, then going once, going twice? Okay, we'll move on. Council updates on assigned boards, commissions, and committees. For today, we'll start with Bruce and move to the left.
I actually have no, well, let me go there really quickly. Oh, I have no committee reports to update.
Okay. Pauline?
I do not either.
Susan?
No, I do not either.
John?
No.
Rockne?
Done.
Maz, are you?
No.
Okay, I'll report on the Convention and Visitors Bureau Board Meeting of November the 21st. So, I heard three things that I want you to know about. First, Josh has received a consultant's economic impact analysis for a possible eastside sports complex. I've talked with Jeff about it. Jeff had received a copy of that as well. It basically concludes that a smaller-scale version would be more appropriate, but even there, I think they have questions about it. And you can fill in some details, because you've read the full report, and I haven't, Jeff.
I don't, I don't think it's necessarily calling for a smaller scale. What the, what the market report intended to do was, was look at the attractiveness of that facility, should it be built for destination tournaments. And so it was trying to quantify an economic impact. And so it looks at your competitors that are out there in the Cedar Rapids Metro, the Quad Cities Metro, Dubuque, Des Moines, and it tries to position your facility plans and determine what you could expect as a kind of a catchment rate for tournaments. And I think what, to try to summarize it, it's not going to be the major tournament attractor that perhaps we had hoped and the Visitors Bureau had hoped. We do feel that a facility of that size is still needed to meet local demand, and not, when I say local, not just Iowa City, but a smaller radius of eastern Iowa. However, it's just not going to be a facility, given some of the competitor, or competitive type of facilities that have been built, that's going to draw in teams from, say, Illinois and Wisconsin and Missouri. You're not going to get a whole lot of that with the planned facility that we have. But, but it still makes it clear that, in their view, there is demand for that type of facility.
Thanks, Jeff. That's a more accurate characterization of the study. Appreciate you clarifying it. The second thing I heard from Josh has to do with their Bravo Awards event that's going to take place on December the 11th. One of the speakers is going to be discussing enrollment projections for colleges and universities. Some of you probably know that there has been talk about projections that indicate something that thinks being called, what, an enrollment cliff, where enrollments are likely to decline precipitously as a result of demographic trends. So, that has potential implications for Kirkwood and for the University of Iowa, as well as colleges and universities around the country. So, it might be helpful for any of you who can to attend the Bravo Awards event. It's going to be at the Marriott in Corvoo.
I'm going.
Yeah, I'm tuned in, too, as well. To hear and see that, a presentation on that topic, because it has... To hear and see that, a presentation on that topic, because it has considerable implications for development projects that the council will be asked to review and so on. And you'll have to have that, that kind of information in mind when looking at those development projects and any others that come forward. The last thing I want to mention, without going into any detail, has to do with a report concerning RAGBRI's net income for the past several years, including the most recent year. And there's certain aspects of those financial reports that are worrisome, not, not illegal, I'm not trying to suggest anything like that, but just troublesome for Josh. And he had some things to say about it during the CBB meeting. I'd be happy to talk with any of you in detail about it separately. That's what I wanted to mention. Now, the Partnership for Alcohol Safety is going to meet on December the 19th, and some of you may know that Malicious Shivers, who has been the co-chair of that committee in the past, is leaving the university, so she will no longer play that role. Okay, that's it for me. Anything else anybody needs to report?
No, thank you.
Okay, good. Well, we can stop the work session there and reconvene at 7:00 for the formal meeting.